Is this a pretty full day, Laura?
No, it isn't. Thought I put a agenda out, maybe I didn't.
The buzz is just buzzing loud as shit.
We have, um, it's actually gonna be an interesting day. We have, uh, an update for Mike on the different buildings and the different projects he has coming up. Who is the maintenance supervisor. And then we also have, um, filling the boards. Uh, Debbie Kelly, uh, has, she manages all the different boards. So, this is the time of year that people's terms end or new people come on. And then it's lunch, as far as the morning goes. Um, and then, uh, we have, uh, Tim Ramadal right after lunch. And then, uh, possibly a commissioner's review of the budget. And that's it. We really don't have, um, much more beyond that.
Is the new person from Wilson Clark here, or do they start today, or?
Uh, we haven't actually gotten that done.
Haven't got?
Yet. We have to wait for Elaine.
And how's Elaine doing?
Uh, she's doing better. She, she was hoping to come in today. She's not gonna make it. Uh, but her husband, uh, was in an accident and broke some ribs, so.
Oh gee.
She's just doing great, start and finish.
Trouble, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, um. When did that happen? Um, Friday, Thursday or Friday?
How'd he do it?
I don't know.
Yeah, Bob Grady broke some ribs.
Yeah, yeah, so. He's got a whole plate. So, hopefully next week. Fingers are crossed.
Is she able to join you by phone or?
Uh, she can if she feels up to it.
Always look around if you don't know where it's gonna hit.
Maybe, if not this week, next week for sure.
Right. Yeah, I don't want to know, I don't claim him. I'm not responsible for his actions.
Okay.
I said, I, that's when I started reading this in the hobby.
Oh boy.
Actually, I think she's up here trying to go to jury duty.
Yeah, so you're trying to do anything with it, you're sure.
The orientation.
You get your money okay?
Oh yeah.
Oh, they took it all.
You didn't, you didn't give it yet.
They took it all, yeah.
Well, I'm sure it's good and sane.
I don't know about that thing. There was, there was something about you'd be after me.
Good advice. So, don't wanna do that.
Um, I think.
Well, she was just staying up front, I think, uh, starting her, not she was coming in, that's what I was.
Here comes Jerry all night now.
She sounds pretty short.
It's all the same.
All right, good morning, everyone. It is ten AM on July first. Uh, so if you would stand with us for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, good morning. Uh, first on the agenda is Greg and Heather Norrisby and the Tost and Bees. Um, great, there you are. I tried to call you guys this morning. I left two messages. Uh, we don't have it yet. Um, as soon as we do, we will go ahead and interrupt the agenda and get that taken care of. So, I apologize for the delay, but hopefully today we'll get you guys taken care of, so bear with us.
We're not getting feet dragging because of what had happened, are we? I mean, is there?
Certainly not.
Okay.
No, it, it seems like it's very simple to us, but apparently there's a lot of legal.
Okay.
Ts to be crossed and Is to be dotted. So, as soon as we get that, we will get it in there.
When do you anticipate that being done?
Ten AM this morning.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know. Sometime today, I hope.
All right.
Yeah, and I did leave a message for you guys to save you a trip into town.
Put me on the agenda next week for ten o'clock, then?
If it comes through today, we'll go ahead and take care of it, if that's okay with you guys?
Yeah, but I'd like to be, just in case it doesn't come through, I don't wanna fall in another loophole. I'd like to be ahead of the game and be on the agenda for ten next week, if that's the case.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
For what I have something here I'd like to read off for, for on the record. I'd like to go on the record to say that last Thursday, June twenty-seventh, I filed a complaint with the First Judicial Court in Broadwater County against the other two commissioners because they continued disregard open meeting rules and repeatedly make decisions without my involvement. I was forced to do this. I was elected to this position by the people and sworn to office. I am here to serve the people of Broadwater County and will not be kept in the dark any longer. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners' Community Update. Franklin, what'd you do this week?
Oh, weed board meeting, went to a solid waste meeting. Yeah, there's something else, but those two are for sure. I think of it all. Yeah, weed. Anyway, that's all I take right now.
All right, we had a, uh, community meeting, uh, that was, um, a joint meeting between the Commissioners and the Solid Waste Board held in Wheatland on Tuesday night. It was fairly well attended. I think there were nineteen members of the public there. The entire Solid Waste Board was also in attendance. And, uh, just a bunch of community meetings this week. So, I think that is it. We have about eleven minutes for mail, so we will start with the minutes from last week, June twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen. Before we go on, I should clarify, the agenda that was sent to the paper, Trudy, I apologize, uh, the date said June twenty-fourth. That's a typo we didn't catch. It should say July first. So, uh, if anyone has a copy of the agenda, um, just be aware, there was a typo. So, we have the minutes from June twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen. Uh, we will have public comment at the end of the day.
Madam Chair, this is in regards to the minutes of last week? And, and the public having an opportunity to go work with the commission and reviewing those minutes?
No, that is not appropriate. Uh, so we will take that up at public comment, and you can go ahead and make your statement at that time. The people who are the elected officials responsible for those minutes are the ones that make the edits.
Okay.
Uh, you can certainly speak with a commissioner prior to the meeting, but, uh, as far as a roundtable community, uh, event on the minutes, that is absolutely inappropriate.
Uh, to respect, we disagree, but thank you, ma'am, and I will raise that at public comment.
Now, to entertain a motion on those minutes.
All right, I think if there's some, uh, if there's any other public comments on it, I'm gonna, uh, wait to hear what, what that is.
So, do you wanna table the minutes again till the end of the day?
Yeah. Uh, yes, at this point.
As far as, as... Okay, uh, we will take any public comment on the minutes after they have been addressed thoroughly this afternoon. Um, so, let the record show that Franklin Sullivan has requested that we take the minutes.
Further reader, if there was, I'd like to use a public comment.
Payroll for, uh, ending six twenty, uh, pay date, six twenty-eight, two thousand thirteen, uh, for the period ending six twenty-three, two thousand thirteen, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven, eight hundred and ten dollars and thirty-four cents.
I'll agree with the payroll. Do you wanna pull up the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Pay the payroll for one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars and thirty-four cents. Pay period ending six twenty-three, twenty thirteen.
And second motion, it's been moved and seconded to pay payroll in the amount of one twenty-seven, eight, ten, thirty-four, for pay date six twenty-eight, two thousand thirteen. All those in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Aye, motion carries. All right, we have the approved claims from last week in the amount of thirty-four thousand, one twenty point four-four. And these are the claims that we went through last week, just compiled into a report. Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion. These claims, voucher number one-one-five, amount of thirty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and forty-four cents.
And second motion, it's been moved and seconded to pay the approved claims, uh, voucher date six twenty-five, two thousand thirteen, in the amount of thirty-four, one twenty point four-four. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, we also have, not on our agenda, so this will be, um, addressed next week, there is a grant, uh, request from the Broadwater Conservation District. Um, it was signed by you, um, on, looks like, the fourteenth of May. Those, uh, grant applications that the county signs onto do need to be brought to a, a public meeting, brought to the attention of the full commission, and, uh, signed upon a vote of the full commission. So, um, even though you've already signed this, we will go ahead and table it till, uh, it is on the agenda and properly noticed, and then, uh, address it at that time. So, that is all the signature items.
Madam Chair, is that the due credit?
Uh, I do not believe so. Last week and the week before, I asked for a copy of Heather Norrisby's letter. Do you have that?
I didn't get it made, I will.
Okay, uh, that should also be shared with the entire commission, especially since she did request that.
Well, that's when I read off, at the meeting.
Yes, and I have asked twice for a copy, so I let the minutes show that, um, that request has been repeated. And we're a few minutes early, but I think I will go ahead and call Mike to come on in. Hey, Mike, are you ready by chance? We're about four minutes early. All right, thanks. Our agendas do have a disclaimer at the bottom that says these issues and times are subject to change. Uh, and since we're just four minutes early, instead of wasting any time, we'll have Mike come and see if we can jump ahead of schedule today with a nice change. All right, Mike Myers, Maintenance Supervisor, Courthouse Roof, Budget Review, General Update. Good morning.
Morning. Okay, I'm gonna start with the roof. Um, roof, I already had a couple of phone calls. I've checked everybody out. Um, everybody pretty much has done a lot of, quite a bit of commercial. They all check out, have good work, work recommendations. On cost, I would suggest a little roofing and going shingles. And price of shingles are gonna go up. All materials are going up everywhere. Lumber, everything. And I would not wanna wait too long without signing the contract, personally. Or you're gonna, or it's gonna cost more for material costs.
Can you remind us what that total is, Mike?
I don't have it with me.
Okay. I think we have it.
Laura, we need to be informed of what this figure is, so we're all set here for this.
This, uh, the totals were, of course, discussed on, uh, June seventeenth, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so they are a matter of public record already. And I believe, what, I think? Sixteen-six, sounds good?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
It was on his first page, in the middle of his first page.
I wrote down sixteen-six thirty-two, so, um, certainly could be wrong, but that's.
No, I think that's right.
Okay, all right. So, for the first order of business, the, uh, roof, uh, Franklin, do you have any further questions?
What'd you say, a sixteen-nine thirty-two?
It was sixteen-six or sixteen-nine. Do you have the paper?
This is what, some notes that I had taken here, let's see. This must be it, these are the notes I put in the back when you read off the vids. And I, I have this one here with, yeah, 'cause the metal must've been twenty-three, eight sixty-two, and the asphalt sixteen-nine thirty-two. Yeah, that's it. Then the other, from Elkhorn, I don't know what the rest of the company was, is eighty-six thousand for metal, thirty thousand for asphalt. And then, uh, there was another one, I don't know who it was, nine, twenty-four thousand.
The little roofing checked out. I called five or six different commercial jobs that they did, and they were all checked out. They did a nice job. They're a big enough company to handle the job.
All right. So, depending on if we make a vote to approve this, you can actually call them and set up the timeframe. Questions or comments, Franklin?
Well, what I'm gonna do is, uh, meet with him, have him, uh, show us, uh, his, uh, insurance, or a copy of his insurance policy.
That's required anyways. Insurance, and all their all their legal documents.
He hasn't, uh...
Well, nobody's signed a contract. Nobody's been informed whether whoever is, whoever gets acknowledged for the job is gonna have to supply everything for us.
We have to essentially let them know first, and then, of course, they produce the required documentation.
That's wrong.
Well, it's any job like I do, I'm a contractor too, and if I get asked, I get, I, I just got a little contract to do a job for the VA. And I just had a contract signed, and I haven't supplied him with my insurance or anything else yet, and I'm going to this week. And that's usually how it works. You don't have to supply people prior to the job first. Usually you sign the contract, then they give you the insurance, the documentation showing that they're a contractor by Montana.
That's wrong. You can get all of this through the governmental.
John, John. We'll, we'll have public comment at the end of the day. Thank you very much.
Well, if the business is...
I've been in business, I've been in business for over twenty years as a contractor, and I know how it works. I was commercial, I was residential. I'm not gonna get involved, 'cause I'm starting to get mad right now.
Yeah, and if you would just address the chair, that would be great.
All right.
Uh, or the commission. So, um, again, any comments or thoughts prior to, or what is your pleasure?
No, I'm willing to go along with it, but, well, it's just normal, and he bring us proof of insurance and... Uh, listen, Madam Chair, what did, did we have on there, the, the weight of the shingles or the, um?
It was a thirty, thirty-year roof.
Okay.
And they were gonna put all new felt, all new drip edge, if I remember right, on it, and, uh, replace all sheathing that needs to be replaced, 'cause there's quite a bit of dry rot up there.
And the reforestation, where does it fit?
Yeah, it'll be all on the, on the contract, and I just, let me check for sure, I think I was on here. Yeah, I think everything is, is on here all right. Which will be in the, in the contract, when it's drawn up.
Yeah. So, like I said. So, if you wanna have him come in and meet you, I can arrange that too.
That's what I'd say, probably in our next meeting. And have him bring.
Well, it might be, have to be at his convenience too, so.
Oh, yeah.
When he's busy.
Should we go ahead and call a meeting as soon as we know what his schedule is and post forty-eight hours, if it's not on Monday or Wednesday?
Sure.
Is that your pleasure?
Okay, I'd go on with that.
Okay, we should still have a motion to proceed?
Yeah, I make a motion to proceed with, uh, a little, this is a little roofing and construction, I guess that's the name of the company right there.
Really? In Montana for numerous years.
There's a bit of, uh, fourteen, whatever. Sixteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two.
All right, I will second the motion, so, uh, it's been moved and seconded to support the recommendation of Maintenance Supervisor for a shingles roof from Little Roofing in the amount of sixteen thousand, uh, six or nine hundred and thirty-two, double chapped, to make sure that that amount is correct for the minutes. Uh, and we will schedule a meeting at their convenience to meet with the commission. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Okay, I got a couple of safety issues to talk about. One, I've talked about it many times since I've been here. You got the grass, or it was allowed to be overgrown out front, where there's a big lip. I've been trying to figure out what to do with it, and try to get maybe some help from the city to cut that down like they did across the street. Because right now, it's about, probably a three-inch lip all the way down that whole line. And I'm afraid somebody elderly is gonna, will try to walk up, and might walk up into the grass, or sit down that bench, and they're gonna trip and fall and hurt themselves. So, if you have any suggestions?
How, how long a stretch is it?
It's the length from, basically, from all the whole front courthouse. If you go out and look, it's, the grass is growing up too high, 'cause he didn't take care of it.
Is, uh, was the grass grown, the cement hasn't raised up?
No, cement's fine, cement's flat. The grass, he just, when I edged it last year, I mean, it was about three inches taller than, than the cement. If you go out and take a walk along there, you'll take, you'll see it. I'm afraid some elderly person's gonna walk through there, trip, and hurt themselves.
So, what are you thinking of, uh?
We need to cut it down and replant, like they did across the street and the city did. 'Cause that's the same problem they had, and they, they stripped it back about, I think, six, eight feet, and they resawed it, dug it down and resawed it.
Can you just take a saw cutter and save the saw and put it right back after the, after it was taken out, or?
I can, I can, we can look at it, but I tell you, it, you know.
Well, I guess it's something apparently should be taken care of, but I guess deciding how to do it is a...
Yeah. I mean, I, I was gonna talk to the city, but I didn't know if you had any suggestions. But it needs to be addressed, and...
Before somebody gets hurt.
I would say you can go ahead and contact the city and see what the, uh, joint venture on it, apparently.
And maybe try to line up the path. The other one too, is the front step. I've checked into it to try to get, try to box it, 'cause it's falling apart, if you haven't noticed. Um, it's just crumbling away. And there's a couple of safety s- spots on the sidewalk that need to be replaced, where that metal plate is, and also, there's a big hump right before it, that's deteriorating and just kinda r- rising up. Um, I do believe it was an anthill underneath there. I killed them, because there was lots of ants. There isn't any more. That probably needs to be replaced before winter, those two spots, and maybe the step at the same time. I came up with a cost on it. Um, resealing all the concrete to try to save it, because, some of it, because Warren used to spread ice melt like it was snow out there. Um, the ice melt, replacing those two spots, and the concrete step. Materials, about nine seventy-three. To replace all that, and reseal all the concrete around the whole courthouse. We try to keep it from, it's just popping up everywhere.
What was it, nine hundred and seventy?
Nine hundred and seventy-three dollars to replace the front step, a couple of spots on the sidewalk, and then have for sealer to reseal all the concrete around the courthouse, down at the clinic and the museum area. So, there's, if you go out and look, you go to see, you can, it's just starting to fall, deteriorate and fall apart. And it's, well, from ice melt, for the years of ice melt, and him throwing ice melt, and then leaving it, not sweeping it off.
Mike, how much of that can you do on your own versus contracting out, just have somebody else come in and do it?
That is on my own.
Okay.
That's not with a contractor.
Any questions? Or comments?
No, uh, it, it sounds, probably sounds all right. What is, well, that can, the step, you take it out there separate, hopefully it isn't...
I have to take the jackhammer at the top of the step out, of the top step, and then I was gonna extend the step out where you can see where it's, uh, lying in front of the step, it's deteriorating, and I was gonna form my form up there and make the step core out there. Move the handrail out just a little bit further. I can show it to you at the meeting if you'd like.
Okay, just, yeah, apparently it's something we're gonna have to get done, so, we actually got some time between now and...
Yeah, before winter.
Yeah.
And the other safety issue I have is, as many, many people have brought this up to me, that Gwen, or the detention center's brought up to me, everybody, and that's about out back. And in the wintertime, we have what, seven, eight months of winter with ice? And if we blacktopped it, it would be, it would make it so that the ice would melt out faster and I have a safety issue back there of them hauling, they go back and forth all the time between the hospital, them coming out, going to their squad cars. Um, and we're gonna have somebody slip and fall. If you leave it like it has been, I think that it won't be easier to snow plow, right now it's really hard to plow. Um, because of the, just being gravel back there. Uh, if we blacktopped it or looking to, maybe because you were mentioning something, some sidewalks are getting blacktopped, maybe if we can get it worked in with them that we can get that, and then that would make it easier to melt out faster because blacktop contains heat in the winter and it would melt out faster and easier to maintain.
I've been approached on that by different people that, about the problem out there also in that, uh, anytime there's any wind to bring a little dust storm out there.
And we could also address the issue of the rain when it comes in, it comes back into the back door of the detention center. Right now how they have it sloped, if we can fix that too at the same time.
I suppose what we should do is get a, get an estimate on it. I would think either the, the city or the county group could blade it and do the dirt work and get it prepared down to where they'd, to the asphalt people themselves would put the final grade on it.
This is, I think is a pretty big concern out back, especially for the sheriff's department going around now.
I suggest get some estimates on it and, and we go from there.
Yeah, and plus when they have court, a lot of people from court park back here. And that was another suggestion Gwen had to me, is if this was able to be made into a one-way street, diagonal parking, they could park their cars out here on the street in diagonal parking. He was making that comment to me last week.
Well, I guess that's, well, one-way street, that's what we have, think about that, but the other, the other part, make sure.
Yeah, they're making a one-way street, I think, over here, going that direction.
Oh, is that right in front of the hospital there?
Yeah, that's what Gwen was telling me last week.
We have a good relationship with the city, so opening up some diala- dialogue on that would go along as to addressing that issue.
And the only other issue I got on the safety thing is detention center. And it's been doing it for years, they've told me about it, they've complained about it and I see it and I can, I think, you guys need to go walk through over there. All the plumbing, the water closets, they've been leaking for years. Um, and I'm worried, and Gwen is too, that if it continues or it might already have happened, we might have mold. So we need to get in there and maybe make a, the extra lex from the budget to, um, replace some of the plumbing that's back in there. It's from the hard water, previous hard water that we've had. I mean, I go in there and I, because I was back there last week working on one and somebody above would flush the toilet and you have to stand back and water because the water would come down.
That is, uh, by law, our detention center, so it would be a good idea to do a walkthrough. So probably the last thing of the day on one of the upcoming meetings, next week or the week after, if that's okay with you?
Yeah, oh yeah, we have to have to cut much of it off, we definitely gotta do something with it.
And that's all I got.
How much of that work can you do yourself, Mike?
All of it.
Okay.
I've already been doing some of it and it needs to be maintained. It should be opened up, everything should be cleaned, there's, there's, um, filters in there and every single one of those that need to be cleaned all the time, they haven't been. And they never had anybody over there to do maintenance work, same with the doors and locks and sliders. Nobody's been, they're supposed to be maintained every quarter, they haven't been touched in, I think, two years. They're supposed to be greased and checked and... And I've been starting to work with that.
What about the, your AC and the fans?
My AC and the fans, they were having somebody come out and changing the filters every quarter. About, I think about two hundred and nineteen dollars every quarter, but that's the only thing they did. And I've been up there cleaning the condensers because they were just completely clogged. And checking the belts and changing the belts, a lot, I do it every month. It's a maintenance schedule I put on, on all the AC units every month to go up and wash the coils and, and change the filters or check the filters and change any belts that need to be changed. Because it hasn't been done like that for years.
Any other issues that you've seen as far as ongoing maintenance that, uh, you're addressing?
Just the yard, I mean, it's been ongoing, getting things back up to where the system is supposed to be. And just the general maintenance, just fix this and fix that electrical and plumbing.
What about the generators, what were those, do you want?
Well, even, even having somebody come out, I found out here a couple of weeks ago, for like six hundred dollars a year to come out and change the oil. And I'm not, I'm gonna start doing that. And then, I mean, there's no sense in somebody coming out changing the oil for six hundred dollars a year.
Is that total or for each generator?
Each generator, I heard the other generator up on the hill has been more money than that. I'm, I'm not positive because I didn't look up that price of that one, but that's what Brenda told me. That she thinks somewhere around seven, eight hundred dollars a year.
How many do we have?
Two.
Okay.
I think that's about, pretty much about that.
Okay, any questions, Franklin?
No, I wouldn't say.
Alright, so, um...
I guess, did they do any other maintenance, besides change the oil or is that all they did? Do they go through anything else or do you know?
Yeah, I know, they go through, they change the oil, they check the belts and they check the hoses and if the hose needs to be replaced. Because alls they are is car engines. And there's, um, well, it used to be a manual, I ordered a new manual and there's a little code screen on there that tells you what, if anything goes wrong. To tell you exactly where to go, how to fix it. Um, pretty much that's all they do, there's some contactors to look at, if you ever hurt, they replace them. For the switches, for the switching system. But it's pretty much a visual what they do.
It is pretty important, that thing kicks on when it's, supposed to just reg- or someplace it didn't, I think it was a fish hatchery or something. The backup power didn't come on for hours and they lost, yeah, it was up north, I think.
Yeah, and that's why they're, they're tested every Monday. They test this one morning and they test the other one up on the hill, I think, on Monday late in the morning. And then they, that gives them the option to see if something's going wrong, see if their switching system's not working right here, but they don't do it. And then when they come, they come once a year and they change the oil, they change the air cleaner, uh, check the hoses, see if there's any exhaust leaks. Um, and then they check the contactors, I've been on the phone with them quite a bit lately, asking them what they do and... And that's pretty much all they do, it's because they come from billings.
So we're paying travel time, I would imagine, in that six to eight hundred?
Yeah, half of that's travel time.
Oh.
I have the last bill on my desk, what they charged last year.
With everything itemized?
Yeah. It was like three, almost three hundred dollars in travel.
Any other questions? Any other comments or updates?
No.
Alright.
Keep it short and simple.
Well, thank you very much and if, if you would follow up and, and get those, um, estimates, that would be a great place to start in getting some of those things done.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Alright, we are way ahead of schedule, um, we have Debbie Kelly coming to talk about words at eleven, so in the meantime, I'll do some minutes. And I gave you copies of the front pages, Ann. They might be under there, yeah, right there. Alright, we have a national forest timber sale for Travis Creek. And these have been in the mail, uh, for perusal since, uh, last Monday, just in the salon in our office. And we also have from the Department of Labor and Industry, um, public hearing notice, they are going to be reevaluating and changing the weights and measuring devices. Licensing fees for weights and measuring devices.
Most of the shooting pertaining to us, anyway. Said we don't have meter for any of the field, I'm believing they feel up down it. We don't see anything scales, so... I think this is just noise, it's put out there, it's a very, very wonderful day.
We have dated June twenty-fourth, a public notice from the Department of Environmental Quality. And the, uh, purpose of the notice is, notice is to, uh, advise that they will be, uh, issuing wastewater discharge permits for the ExxonMobil Refining and Supply Company on the Yellowstone River, Yellowstone County. This is essentially the same thing, uh, intention to issue wastewater discharge permit for the city of Fort Benton. We also have a, um, railroad signal and improved crossing service project for what they are doing on Quarter Circle Road. Just a copy of the final contract with the signatures.
I'm just curious, I'm not... I'm just curious, I'm not... Under eighty-six thousand for that project. Doesn't matter, I'm just curious when they're gonna be doing it.
Uh, we also have from the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services, a grant, um, invitation to apply for a grant and this is for addictive and mental disorders. Um, and it is for, uh, counties with detention centers to address recidivism.
Appreciate it. Refer that one to the sheriff, I'd say.
And, uh, she also would have gotten a copy of that, so it's, uh, keeping the commission in the loop so that we're aware of what's coming through, um...
Madam Chair, how much is that grant for?
There isn't a grant at this point, it's an invitation to apply, so it's, it's a full bucket of money. And as applications come through with ideas, then they disseminate between those different projects who fits what, what gets funded and at what point.
Okay, so the application...
So this is the first step in the process.
The application is just going into a pool at this time?
If, if this is just an invitation to apply, there's no applications yet.
Okay, thank you.
And this is from the Montana Department of Revenue, uh, protest, protest attack settlement with Puget Sound Energy. Um, they protested their taxes for two thousand five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven and twelve. And the settlement resulted in a ten percent reduction of market value for each tax year. When a company, uh, protests their taxes, there's a process they follow. They do have to continue to pay those taxes, the county puts that payment into a separate account, the county does not touch it uh, until a decision is rendered by Department of Revenue. So the decision has been rendered and, um, this is a letter advising us to that effect.
Madam Chair, do you have an amount in that fund?
Not in an amount, uh, for the county debt, no. We have an amount, I believe that they, uh, will be subject to pay and getting back from the taxes they've already paid.
Okay, just for clarification, follow-up, is there a process that the commission needs to go through to get, you know, understand what our share is of that?
I do not believe there's a process for the commission to follow, this would be a quarter county treasurer process. Uh, this is just advising the commission so we know what's going on.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I think it's all been, take care, we just, I think we have a saying at all.
Do you wanna keep any of these before they're filed? And again, you can make any copies that you like, I did not copy them this week. Well, moving on, uh, it looks like we're taking care of business pretty quickly today. Debbie Kelly was gonna be here to talk about the, uh, HR renewal of county boards. Since our agenda again does say that items and issues and times are subject to change, you can go ahead and address these now and get this off our plate. Um, I gave you each a copy of Debbie's paperwork. And, um, Debbie asked that we just go ahead and handle this, which we can absolutely do and just send her in questions we have, if you do not have any objection. Hearing none, we'll proceed. The first one is for the, um, airport board. Uh, Bob Hollister has submitted a renewed letter of interest and the airport board has been, uh, has advised the commission that they are okay with this commitment, uh, or this decision to re-renew. Uh, Ernie Carlson was on the board for many, many years and he has resigned as of, uh, yesterday. And we have done this before, we go ahead and make a motion to... And we have done this before, we go ahead and make a motion to approve or override the decision of the Airport Board on both sides.
Each one individually if we go along?
Mm-hmm, well, for the different boards.
Yeah. Maybe we go ahead with the board recommendations, Bob Hollister.
And in the motion, you should also state the number of years for the term. We do one year for a new board member, and stagger years of, term years of three, except for the Planning Board, which is two.
So he'd be a one-year?
He'd be a three-year, since he's renewing his interest. So he served his one year for his first year last year, now he's renewing.
Oh, okay. Do you want me to have that, that go along with the- Make motion go along with the board recommendation, Bob Hollister on the Airport Board for a three-year term.
Okay, I will second the motion, it's been moved and seconded to support the board's recommendation to renew a three-year term for Bob Hollister, for the Airport Board, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. And any objections to Ernie Carlson and his resigning? Okay. It shows the board has no objections. For the Tax Appeal Board, we have a letter of renewal, a letter of interest from Nancy Mayer, a renewed letter of interest from Bill Hubber, and a new member, letter of request from Leonard Jeffrey. We should probably determine a three-year and a two-year for Nancy and Bill, so we have staggered terms, and Leonard would be a one-year, as he is renewing. Bill has been on the Tax Appeal Board and has served as chair in the past, so my recommendation would be that he would be a three-year. Nancy, who's in her second year, would be a two-year, and Leonard would be a one-year, which keeps him staggered. That certainly won't be to discussion.
That's fine with me. But in the form of motion, that is... Who was it? Oh, Hubber was the three-year one.
That would be my recommendation, based on his experience.
And Nancy Mayer is the two-year. And... How do you pronounce this last name?
Jeffrey Ably.
Jeffrey, is a one-year.
Okay, I'll second the motion, it's been moved and seconded to renew Bill Hubber's appointment on the Tax Appeal Board for three years, renew Nancy Mayer's appointment to the Tax Appeal Board for two years, and appoint Leonard Jeffrey as a new board member for one year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, for the Fair Board, we have three members whose terms are expiring, who have all terms renewed, renewed letters of interest, and the board has okayed all three. Jessica Crush, John Rousher, and Lisa Larson. That is a large board, so we probably do not need to stagger these three. Madam Chair, what were those names again, please? Jessica Crush, C-R-U-S-C-H. John Rousher. And Lisa Larson. Thank you. And Larson is S-O-N. Thank you.
What motion on this one?
Whenever you read.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. You appoint Jessica Cutt, how was her last name pronounced?
Crush.
Cutt, Crush, okay. John Rousher, and Jessica Larson. Lisa Larson.
Okay, I will second the motion, it's been moved and seconded to renew the appointments of, and support the Fair Board's recommendation to renew the appointments of Jessica Crush, John Rousher, and Lisa Larson, all for three-year terms, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, for the Mosquito Board, we have... And this would be for Townsend, we do not have any information from Mr. Allen, Chuck Allen, at this point, so if it's okay with you, we should probably table this till we have some more information.
I only can only hear from three forks, you skipped over that one?
No, I think you skipped one, Chuck Allen, Mosquito Townsend. Franklin, Chuck's name is on the first page, there's no letter from him.
On this, up here, you mean? Oh, okay. See, the one I got is, here's this...
Right there.
Yeah, I see Chuck there.
Yep. We don't have a letter of interest or resignation from him at this point, so that's why my suggestion is to table a decision for him till we hear from him on what he would like to do.
Yeah, I'll go with that.
Okay. So, Three Forks, Mosquito District. We have a resignation tendered by Jack Crittenger, and I don't know how long he's been on the board, and a letter of interest to renew for Larry Phillips. No feedback from the board. Looks like it's just a two-member board, so that would be the reason why. And as he is renewing it, it'd be for a three-year term.
I'll go on and make the motion. Point Larry Phillips is a three-year, three forks, Mosquito District.
All right, I'll second the motion, it's been first and seconded to renew Larry Phillips for a three-year term on the Mosquito Three Forks District. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, for the Museum Board, we have two members who are renewing their interest in the board, and the Museum Board has okayed both members, David Clark and Chuck McLean. And that is a large board, so those would be, again, for three years.
I'll make a motion, and the Museum Board, Chuck McLean and David Clark, be appointed.
For three-year terms.
Three-year term.
Okay, I'll second the motion, it's been moved and seconded to reappoint David Clark and Chuck McLean to the Mosquito, excuse me, the Museum Board for three-year terms each, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we have two members whose terms are up on the Parks and Recreation Board. One member has renewed his interest in the board, and the board has okayed John Barsness, and we do not have anything from Cindy Christopherson about what she would like to do. I recommend we hold off on making a decision regarding Cindy, but we could, if we would like, renew John Barsness for a three-year term.
I'll make the motion, I mean... John Barsness, you said?
He's on the very first page.
On this up here, okay.
I'm just going down the first page.
Yeah, okay, okay. John Barsner, Parks and Recreation. I make the motion, appointing for the Parks and-
For three years?
Three years, yeah.
Yeah, I'll second the motion, it's been moved and seconded to reappoint John Barsness to the Parks and Recreation Board for a three-year term, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, to the Planning Board, these terms are two years, and we have, the board has okayed and approves the renewal request of Herb Argabright and Ron Elliott to the Planning Board.
I'll make a motion, except Herb Argabright and Ron Elliott to the Planning Board. What's the term, I guess it's-
Two years.
Is it two years, okay.
Okay, I'll second, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Herb Argabright and Ron Elliott to the Planning Board for two years each, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, motion carries. And we have two vacancies, anyone's interested, two vacancies on the Solid Waste Management Board. Mike Stolti and Dawn Reynolds have both served for many years. But Mike has, I think Dawn was in her, served her first year last year, and neither of them will be serving again, so we do have two vacancies. That's a five-member board, if anyone is interested. Weed Board, we have J.J. Connor, who does not wish to serve. He has been on that board for many years, I believe he's the secretary right now, or no, excuse me, the chairman, right now. John Potter has submitted a letter to renew onto the board again. The board has approved John Potter, and that is a four-three-year term.
I'll make a motion, to John Potter for the Weed Board, for the three-year term.
I'll second the motion, it's been moved and seconded to support John Potter for the Weed Board for a three-year term, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the Trust Board, voting members first. We have three members who would like to renew their interest in the Trust Board. Board has okayed this. Joe Jepson, Kim Condalick, and Virgil Binkley.
I'll make the motion, we'll go ahead with them on the Trust Board, Joe Jepson, Kim Condalick, and Virgil Binkley.
Okay, for three-year terms each?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second the motion, it's been moved and seconded to reappoint Joe Jepson, Kim Condalick, and Virgil Binkley to the Trust Board for three years each, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We have two members who have renewed interest as non-voting members of the Trust Board, Bill Hubber and Beth Eylee, and the board has okayed. And those would also be for three-year terms. Oh, excuse me, one-year terms. Renew annually.
That's it, we're renewing Bill Hubber, William Hubber, and Beth Eylee on the Trust Board as non-voting members for... You said it's a three-year term also?
One-year term.
One-year term.
Okay, I'll second that, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Bill Hubber and Beth Eylee to the Trust Board as non-voting members for one year each, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, for the County Compensation Board, we have one person who has resigned as he moved out of town, Tim Ford, and we have another member who has renewed a letter of interest, Mike Conkey.
I'll make a motion, Mike Conkey, on the County Compensation.
Right, and that would be for a three-year term. And I will second the motion, all those, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Mike Conkey to the County Compensation Board for a three-year term, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, any... Anything else on the Board of Members? Okay, that concludes our order of business for 11 o'clock. We do have to hang out till 11:45 in case there's a COS, but again, as our agenda is subject to change, Tim, I'm gonna move you up and give you 15 minutes to address the board now. For, and that would be Tim Ravindol, Coalition of Concerned Citizens Group. If that's okay with you, sir.
Madam Chair, if I might respectfully decline that offer, for the reason being is, I would think that there might be folks that might wanted to be here this afternoon when it was originally scheduled.
Okay, we will convene again then at 1:30.
I'd like to move it forward, it's high and go home, but some folks don't get those last-minute memos, and I think it would do respect, to make sure that they keep that.
All right. We do have the Commissioner's Budget Review, did you bring your budget paperwork, Franklin?
Yeah.
Would you like to go through that?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just did for clarification, did our HR person, Kim Sol, offer coming down and visiting? I think that was brought up earlier in the-
No, we just took care of it.
Oh, okay.
She sent the paperwork, I'll be right back.
Tim, how much time do you have this afternoon for your presentation?
Fifteen minutes.
I'm sure some folks probably would have been happy to move forward that are here now, but I think it's important to make sure anybody that saw that agenda.
All right. So, did you get a chance to look at this at all? What we have are a list of items and proposed totals for them, as well as the actuals that were spent this year. Salary and those related items are set at this point, but we can start with the General Commissioner's Office Supplies, and plug in a number there. What was adopted last year was $100, what was used was $56.
Yeah, maybe just leave it at $100 again.
I would propose that we actually hug the... I would propose we lower that, and we stick with the 2011 number.
That's a good idea.
Gives us a little bit of a cushion, but not a tremendous cushion, it's $88. Reduction of $12. Well, this is-
$88.
Yeah. See, so Commissioner's Office Supplies, that was increased quite a bit to $397 because of the purchase of three new computers, well, three used computers, they were all refurbished. There was a suggested $3,000, I think that's way high for what we need. Was adopted last year, was $125. We had zero in 2011 and $123 in 2012. What do you think?
Now, which one do you want?
General Commissioner Operating Supplies. That's fund 220.
All carry. Last one was $397. What was you recommending?
I recommend $125.
Back to what it was there?
Yep, I don't think we need $397 or $3,000. Okay. And for repair and maintenance supplies, that will probably eventually be under the maintenance budget, so that Mike can buy bulk rather than buy department, should save the county money, but that's, with everything, it takes a little bit of time. But what was adopted last year is considerably more than we used. Water is going up, and propane is always going up.
$179 was used last year, so, I don't know, maybe do 250 right in there?
I'll meet your 250 and lower you to 200. I would suggest- I would suggest we actually either go with what was actually used this year, the 180, or go up to the 200 even. But if you want to stick with 250, you can do that. 200, all right. So, Commissioner's postage, box rent, et cetera. That was-
550, 11, 193 percent. Actually, I'd probably let them go up some.
It was budgeted at 550, for last year, we used 194.
But I see there in '12, we used 328.
2011's a little skewed, that was a third- That was thirteen, almost $1,300, and that is because we had a citizens-initiated zoning, and so we did a lot of certified mailings, which are expensive.
From actuals costing, actual, 200? I don't know. I'd say 250.
Okay. Printing, books, applications, we spent zero this year. We had budgeted 150, and we spent 149 in 2012. We will have the law books to purchase this year since the legislature just finished their session. With that being said, that will add to about the 150.
As I say, would 150 cover that, do you think?
Yeah, typically it does.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. On the law books, is some of the counties going to the electronic copies rather than spending this money on the hard copy books?
Some of them are, yes. Those who are proficient with Google are using the Internet.
And I guess I just ask that because there is definitely a tremendous amount of cost in them books. And if nobody's using them, or very few people are using them, the electronic option may be better off, unless there's a requirement to buy the books and...
There's not a requirement, but I think the assumption that nobody's using them is probably an erroneous one. If you've seen mine, you will see that it is marked up, highlighted, skippies all over the place. It is completely trashed after two years. I would say that that is more than likely the same for my fellows. So, they're pretty heavily used. We don't have Internet down here, so when we need a law book for a meeting, we are stuck with having to use the old-fashioned books rather than referencing Google. We just don't have it. So, we do in our office now. We just don't hear in the meetings.
Laura, how much are these books going to cost?
It costs about $150 for the three of us. Well, four of us. I don't remember the exact cost. We get Title VII and Title 76. The rest, we use the clerk recorders upstairs. All right, so Fund 330, publicity and dues. That would be our MAKO dues, I would imagine, and advertising for legal ads and agendas, et cetera.
So, most of it is to a MAKO dues, then, right?
Not most of it. You'd be surprised. I would say most of it is probably advertising. $10,040 is what was adopted for 2013. What was spent was $7,800. And in 2005, what was spent was $8,500.
And in '12, you mean?
Yes, thank you.
I don't know, probably, but now that being so high in '12, is that because of that other stuff then, too?
Actually, I would have guessed the reason it was high in '12 is because we were advertising for positions. That's an extremely expensive process, so anytime you have to advertise for an employee who has left us, it costs the county money. That would be my guess as to why that cost is so much higher.
So, this year, $7,700. I'd just say maybe we should round it off at $8,000.
I think maybe with everything going on, we'd be wise to look at the $8,500, just in case we have an exodus of employees, we have the money to cover advertising for those positions.
Okay, that's okay.
Okay. Next one is commissioner's utilities. Again, eventually, in the near future, that will be under the maintenance supervisor's budget. Was adopted at $2,500 last year. Actual was $2,000, almost, maybe about $2,062, and in 2012 was $1,960. So, what's your pleasure on that one?
$2,100.
Okay. Professional service and investments. That would be professional services, resources that we bring in to help with given issues that we need professional assistance with. Adopted in 2013 was $10,900.
Like outside attorneys, is that, is that being that?
Mostly that's paid for by the Pilt Legal Fund, so this would be... No, I can't even think.
Those $8,000 expense, or actually, almost $8,100. Put another hundred on, make it $8,200.
I think we would be wise to look at the history. 2011, we used almost $9,000. 2012, we used 10.4. This year, we were down at eight, or $8,100. I would suggest that we look at the history and maybe, especially since I don't, we don't have a list of exactly what's in that, that we look at one of those other numbers.
The 211 on that name?
Okay.
Round it off at $9,000 then. That year was almost nine.
Okay, that would be something like Lane and Associates for drug testing. We pay for the shots, the flu shots every year. Trying to brainstorm some of the other things we've paid for. Yeah, but no, you said hug the fiscal year 11 number?
Mm-hmm.
I can live with that.
$9,000 then?
Yeah. That'll work. Oh, and that would also be floodplain. WWC County Engineering, that kind of thing would come out of that. Yeah, we had some work a couple of years ago on the Toston Bridge, not the big one, but the little one closer to town. The old steel bridge. That would have come out of that fund.
What was done then?
It was checked for safety, engineered by Sean, at the request of some citizens in Toston. Repair and maintenance services, again, this will eventually be under Mike's budget. Until then, it's under ours. That could be phone repairs, wiring repairs, electrical repairs, heating repairs, that kind of thing. That would be specific to the commissioner, so with our office, that kind of thing. So, what was adopted in 2013 was 20, almost $2,700. What was used was almost $14, and what was used in 2012 was almost $19. Any thoughts?
I'd say probably go with that higher figure, that $1,891.
$1,891?
Over 12.
Okay. Travel and meals. This would be traveling to conferences, traveling to meetings, traveling to trainings. Meals are only allowed if we stay overnight at those, otherwise they're on the line dying. What was adopted in 2013 was $2,000. What was spent was 11, and what was spent in 2012 was 1640, and almost $1,900 in 2011.
Maybe goes back like the 212 one?
Okay.
Try and round it off at $1,700 then?
Seventeen, we're up. Okay. Training services. We will have your budget training coming up in December through MAKO. Most of the MAKO trainings are free. We may have some professional trainings, that kind of thing that comes in. Last year adopted was 500. What was used was 265.
211, 212, 1,610.
Yeah. I don't know why that, I don't remember why that was so high.
Maybe keep the same as it was last year, the 500?
Okay, I think that's wise. Contracted services. This would, this would be if we paid through contracted services to have, department has loaned us their employees for minutes in the past, that kind of thing. What was, it's also for professional services. What was adopted was 10,000. What was used was 4,500. We had quite a bit in 2012. That would also be some of the legal fees. 2011 was 4,200. Not necessarily for the lawyers, supplementary costs.
Looks like an aggregate of that $4,500 figure.
Mm-hmm. Repeat last year's then?
Yeah, just roughly at 4,500, you suppose?
Okay. All right, and the others are set for the most part. Insurance, that's already set. Machine learning equipment, we really shouldn't have any. So, we will go ahead and get this submitted, and we won't do anything more with it till August when we get the valuations from department revenue, unless you have any questions or comments.
No, I don't.
All right. If half an hour till COS, we'll go ahead and do public comment, if there's any public comment.
Cheryl? It was an article in the Independent Record that said that Debbie Kelly sent an email to the Independent Record on June 17th stating that Broadwater County Finance Officer and DES Coordinator were placed on administrative leave by a two-to-one vote. Could we have a copy of that email?
I would imagine so.
Would you instruct her to give me a copy of that email?
Mm-hmm, I will speak to the county attorney.
Is there an agenda for that June 14th meeting?
Yes, it was published in the paper.
The June 14th meeting?
No, there was no meeting on June 14th. We had a meeting on June 10th and a meeting on June 17. And June, yeah, that's it. Any other public comment? Joan?
The 14th was the meeting that there was a bunch of us here and Mr. Slitka, Commissioner Slitka. You didn't show up until noon, and then you canceled the meeting.
That was the 12th. Any other public comment? Ellen?
On the, getting back to the roof, when the supervisor, Mike, made a comment about that there was some rotten or decayed and damaged sheeting, has he actually been able to get up there and see how much damage there is?
He has been up there with each of the contractors who submitted bids and has been up there himself quite a bit.
Because I was kind of, the way he was explaining there as far as on the contract, to where he made that it was unknown as far as how much damage, and I was curious, do they have a pretty good idea how much underneath damage there is, or is that to be determined once they open it up?
I actually believe they have quite an idea. I wouldn't imagine that a professional contractor would put in a bid without having a solid bit of information on that. They don't want to get stuck with a bigger bill than they bid out.
Right, because sometimes, you know, falls under extras.
Sure.
Contract as well, that's why I was curious if they had gotten as much information as possible to physical observance, because I don't know what the attic would like up under, you know, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, he did take them up there. All right. Any other public comment? Yes, sir?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Slitka's affidavit states that he was not given the opportunity to vote on June 14th meeting regarding the decision to put the county employees on administrative leave, and that he was not even notified of the meeting. Is that true?
I am not going to comment on, on any issues like that. Any other public comment? Yes?
With regard to the grass that they were talking about that has built up along the sidewalk, that's common to, for that to happen over the years of plowing snow or sweeping snow with the debris that builds up from piling the snow there. So, it's going to happen eventually again, so just a note that the maintenance should put that in his budget to have that fixed. Not every year, it's not a problem, but over the course of years, it's not a lack of necessarily maintenance on it, although edging does help cut it down, but it will build up.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? All right. The only other matter of business until 1:30 that we have is those minutes. If you want to address those at this time.
There was a question on that sheeting. I found this here, it said on here, inspect sheeting for damage, slash wood rock, water damage, will replace at additional charge. So evidently, it's not determined just how many sheets or how much is going to have to be replaced.
Right, because I guess Mike, because I had heard comments and that it was extensive. Well, that would, that would drastic, if it was really extensive, then that would definitely change the cost of roofing.
Well, yeah, of course, it'd change no matter who did it, I mean...
Right, but I mean, I was just curious if there was, if it had been actually...
They didn't have an estimate of how many sheets or square feet or anything like that, apparently, because there again, until they start tearing that off, they're not...
Right.
...exactly.
John?
The question of the repairs and what have you. Who will do these repairs? The contractor or our maintenance people?
The repairs to what?
To the roof.
No, we're going to contract with a company to actually do that.
Which, who might that be?
Little Roofing was the question.
No, that is my question, I asked you. I asked you, are you going to allow our maintenance people to replace this plywood? Because it may even be trusses. It could get very extensive. Or it should be let out to another subcontractor. It gets very extensive. I was in the roofing business for over five years, and it can be a, it can exceed the price of the work that you're doing, and you need to draw a line where it, where it comes and goes in the contracting. The question going back to the license and insurance and bonding set by the state, there even from company to company, let alone from contractor to contractor, there can be a tremendous variance, and no prominent leases or contracts would be let by anybody, especially by the county, unless this is all nailed down first. Because when you make application to somebody to do, give you a bid, they automatically furnish you with this, not afterwards, and we do not have it. And I object to your agreements that you made to proceed on with this contract. You must have these deeds, I mean, these... You must have these deeds, I mean, these deals, these insurance. And when you get them, then you can get a record from the insurance company, otherwise you're in the dark.
Thank you, John. Any other public comment?
Just to clarify, John, no matter, like I said before, whoever does it, whatever the problem is, it's got to be taken care of. And if it's, it's, we negotiate with the contractor at that time, once we know what it is.
No. If it's not his contract and he avoids it like he's already done, it's your responsibility. That can be anything that works out. And if you don't have supervision while it's going on, it can get wild.
Well, there will be supervision, but I guess I don't quite follow you all the way. I think everything is covered okay, John, or will be.
Well, that's not covered too good. Run, run. You need to have that drawn out in this agreement very clear. Because otherwise, it becomes at the end, and then when they want to bill you with an open end contract, it's too bad.
Well, I guess we could in the agreement, what his rate per hour would be for doing this. We could, I guess we could ask him that, but like I say, no matter who does it, that cost is going to be there.
Well, the difference is, if our maintenance department does, it's just materials. Because we've already employed them. And if he's going to be here working in tune with them, otherwise, the labor is always the biggest item.
Oh, well, I'm sure at the time, like I say, at this point, we don't know just whether it be, maintenance, our maintenance guy could sure work hand in hand with him on it.
Well, he says he's a contractor, so, and been doing it for twenty years, so I should think he would know how.
Mm-hmm, so, I think there'd be a working relationship between the two.
Well, that's got to be specified, it don't just happen. What's not written down don't exist. County's got deep pockets, and people like to play with them.
That's a consideration to take though, John, we'll take that consideration, I think, maintenance work.
Any other public comment? All right, do you want to address those minutes?
Now, I was going to wait till that other comment period that you talked about earlier, so.
Well, this is public comment right now. We just have the one appointment at one thirty for fifteen minutes.
And there would be normal, normal process is public comment period after the last item on the agenda.
We could do that, yeah, but since we have twenty minutes with nothing on the agenda, it would be wise to go ahead and pass our minutes from last week. You were given copies, I believe, starting last Wednesday. So, you've had a chance to read them. But if you'd rather, we can just sit here.
I had a couple of little changes in it. If I remember right, I think, I talked then, I think those were.
They have been taken care of.
Were taken care of, yeah. The only thing I was concerned about is, but from the public, when they said they wanted some comments on the minutes, that's, I was going to pull to that.
I haven't heard any in public comment, we just had public comment. The minutes are not, the public is not able to offer edits to the minutes. That is the responsibility of the people who have brought forth issues or the commissioners who are responsible for signing them, and is part of our job description.
If I might, Madam Sheriff?
Tim?
Regarding this afternoon's agenda, part of our agenda on this afternoon is in regards to the minutes and in regards to the process there that we've been looking at. So, respectfully, there are several folks that have some questions. And that's why I would love to be able to take care of that now. But I think in due respect, folks that were anticipating that, to look at those details a little closer this afternoon. And respectfully, we'd like to thank Commissioner Slifka for giving us an opportunity before the minutes are finally adopted.
There's nothing more we can do on that. Any other business, public comment? We have seventeen minutes to wait, see if we have any certificates of survey. John?
In reference, which Mr. Slifka addressed his accusations against you in the court. Excuse me. How do you respond to this as being able to continue on doing your duties with this accusation holding over your head? How do you plan on moving on forward? Because there's been other accusations, not accusation, actually judgments filed against you. Now, how do you plan on dealing with that? Or can you quote us some law which gives you the authority to continue working as a commissioner after this filings?
No comment, but thanks for your comment. Any other public comment?
Okay.
All right, we have sixteen minutes to set.
Madam Sheriff?
Yes, Sheriff.
From last week, when there was the debate about the claims that were given to the county treasurer, Franklin gave claims for traveling and you said that you used the car, the company car. Would that be the same, one of the same?
Actually, it's a savings of quite a bit, I don't know what it is off the top of my head.
Does he have the privilege to use the car?
What's that?
Does he have the privilege to use the company, the county car?
Absolutely. Okay, yes.
Makes no sense to me to come in here, all the way here to get the car to go the opposite direction. And if I'm going to hell, I've already started. If I want to go somewhere to have a sandwich afterwards, I can, I'm going to come in the car here. So, anyways.
Laura, can I comment on that?
John?
Can Mr. Slifka take the vehicle home when there's nobody using it? Seems that he's farther away.
Well, I, I don't want to do that.
No, insurance does not cover county vehicles to be parked in individuals' driveways. That would be an absolute misuse of county equipment.
Well, that isn't true all the way, because patrol cars go with the deputy.
Law enforcement is different. Because you're on call twenty-four seven. Any deputy will tell you. I'm sure there's different provisions for that, we'll leave that to the sheriff. John?
What has been done to acquire a new administrator that, what was her name? Was one that you laid off?
No comment.
What have you done to replace them?
No comment, thanks for your comment. Any other public comment?
The other items that are shown on the agenda, is that going to be covered this afternoon or?
We already covered the commissioner's budget review.
Right.
And, which ended up being a reduction. And the Tim Ramadall Coalition of Concerned Citizens Group wants to meet at one thirty. So, that will be still coming up this afternoon.
So, the Second Amendment resolution in the?
That was last week.
Okay.
Yeah, the items on the bottom, under items for discussion, action review and signature are the things that we have to just vote on. So, we just throw those in when we have time. Part of mail or ongoing business. Thank you, you bet. One question I have, do you have email? I heard you have email.
I give it to Ann.
Okay. Probably would be a good idea for me to have that too, so that we can keep you in the loop.
I assume Ann shared it.
I wasn't instructed to share it, I certainly will.
Oh, yeah, I just put it over what I'm closing.
Do you know it, because you could give it to me right now, I have a pen, I could write it down. All right, thank you, good to know. Tim?
I have a public comment here that I'd like to discuss, being the subject of Second Amendment. Many of the points on the Second Amendment actions, it's pending before the board, awaiting Commissioner Gradley to get back. Many times in the presentations, et cetera, I have made statements and gave you folks some information regarding Prince versus United States to address the supremacy clause, this Supreme Court case perfectly laid down the foundation for our Tenth Amendment rights to have our sovereignty as well as, you know, the ability to do what we're trying to do here. For your convenience, commissioners, I have a little handout here that's prepared by Sheriff Mack and Sheriff Prince that outlines that case in summary form, gives you the nuts and bolts of what that's really all about. And that is really a good valuable read, it don't take a long time to go through it, but it provides that foundation for giving you, the commissioners and our local government, that foundation to move forward on, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? John?
In reference to our budget, which was supposed to be pretty well finalized by July the first, in one of your previous meetings, you made a comment, and I don't know where it went from there because it was disputed, about bringing the state in to aid, or the county, excuse me, the county of Lewis and Clark to aid our budget process. That was part of the question that I just asked you that I got no answer. And that was, who do we have to do this now? And how's it going to get done?
The budget is never finalized by July first. The Department of Revenue will determine the valuation of the county and that determines the mill value for the county. Once we get that and that comes in the middle of, or the beginning of August, once that comes in, then we start the budget process and we have a countdown of thirty to forty-five days, I forget which, in order to finalize the budget. Last year, the budget was finalized in early September. So, the budget is never finalized July first.
But isn't it correct if somebody was working on it all this time? Who's working on it now?
Actually, all the department, department heads have been working on it for quite some time. And everybody's pitching in.
Well, so it's being coordinated through you?
Nope.
Well, give me a name.
Nope.
It's easy to give no answers.
Yep. Any other public comment? Sheriff?
That bill that was presented to the commission last week for ninety-five, I think it was fifty, ninety-five dollars and fifty-three cents for a working dinner for the planning board meeting or something, I asked Doug Ellis for a copy of the county claim form and the bill. He sent me to Tammy. Tammy is on vacation. Debbie Kelly said she didn't have any idea when she'd have time to get that for me. I'd like a copy of that bill.
We'll see what we can do. Tammy is on vacation for this week. Any other public comment?
Is she the only person that can do that?
Um, we'll have to see. Any other public comment? Joan?
There was, a county employee put something in the newspaper that was kind of fabricated. And wouldn't it take disciplinary actions to make that employee responsible for fabrications?
There's a process to follow for everything that we do. It's a legal process vetted in Montana state law. It would depend on the issue and so many other pieces of the puzzle. And seven minutes till lunch if we don't have a COS.
Signing board lady is not here, she probably don't have one.
She doesn't bring them forward. Anybody who does surveys brings them forward. And we've had them come from Bozeman, Billings, Helena, Townsend. And they're all advised that it's a trouble to come by, so out of respect to them, we have to wait till we know if there's them coming or not.
I have a question, are the Norrisbies rescheduled then?
They're going to be rescheduled, I'm hoping that I can get that deed at lunch and get that taken care of today. But yes, they'll be rescheduled at ten o'clock until we get it done.